In the fifty-ninth meeting of the seventy-third term of Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to all members, members of the press, and folks visiting us today, please ensure your electronic devices are on silent, if not turned off, to ensure you do not interrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by the amazing Reverend Daryl Beryl Whipple, pastor of the historic Mount Hebron Baptist Church in West Baltimore. It is our pleasure and honor to welcome you here today.
Shall we bow for a word of prayer? God, our Creator, who fashioned the world from nothingness into magnificence, who took a dark canvas and transformed it into a colorful tapestry. There's a few of your humble servants who have gathered to call on you in this meeting. We acknowledge your sovereignty and power, as well as your abundant grace working in this moment. We continuously express our gratitude for placing us in positions where we represent the needs and even the future of the city of Baltimore. We do not take lightly the call of service on our lives. It is our prayer that you would equip us to serve well. Serve with dignity, serve with integrity, serve with consistency and with purpose, serve to build a legacy of service. May our public decisions match our private actions. As we have been called to serve, our prayer today is that you bless our stewardship in this hour, that we strive toward the selections and choices best suited for the communities we represent. Bless our leadership so it may endure times of transition, challenge, and peril. Bless the citizens of our city, give them hope in hopeless situations. Bless those who teach the unteachable, provide resources for those in need, and strive to uplift the downtrodden. Bless those who feel like giving up, reminding them, yes, there is a bright side somewhere. In this city of Baltimore, we call on you because the poor need you, the privileged need you, the ignorant need you, the entitled need you. Your people, your children, need you. Guide us in our thoughts and our actions so they may honor you. Forgive us of our idiosyncrasies and indiscretions. Forgive us of our egos and our impatience. Forgive us for moments of greed and ill intent. It is you who have made us and not we ourselves, so keep us in a way that renders you glory. Thank you for hearing and even accepting this prayer and move us toward a progressive end. And it is through faith we seal this prayer in the name of the one who turned over tables in the tabernacle and healed the sick in the streets on the Sabbath without a copay. In the name of the one who taught us to remember the widow and the orphan. In the name of the one who reminded us the poor will be with us always. In the name of the one who commanded us to feed the hungry and clothe the naked. In the name of the one who told us to see about the least of these. In the great name of the risen and soon coming King, we do pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Beryl Whipple. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's my pleasure to welcome back not a stranger to these chambers, Lester Davis, who's Vice President of Care First, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield. Mr. Davis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, it feels good to be home. I spent a decade working in this building, most of that time in this very room. And so to see so many faces who I count as friends, I just want to say thank you for having me. As the President mentioned, I serve as Vice President and Chief of Staff at Care First, where I have the distinct honor and privilege of leading all of our mission work for Care First, our investments in communities, not just here in Baltimore, but throughout the entire region, all of Maryland, DC, and Northern Virginia. I also have the honor of leading our work, mission-critical work around health equity and public and population health. And so I wanted to come here tonight to let you guys know, talk about some of the work we did in 2022. We're continuing a lot of that good work this year. But last year, we had the honor of investing about $24 million to about three hundred and fifty-eight nonprofits throughout the region. Two more than $2 million of that dollars right here in Baltimore City, looking to blow that number out of the water for 2023. And that's everything from mental and behavioral health, things that are top of mind for all of the folks that are in this room, and then also work on economic development, workforce development. And we know we want to do more. I often say, and we're fond of saying at Care First, that eighty percent of what impacts your health, my health, the health of the people we collectively serve is environmental and situational and circumstantial. Twenty percent genetics and your relationship with your primary care physician, so we want you to be in those spaces. But the eighty percent, we know that at Care First, we've got an over-index on that eighty, and we've got an obligation and duty to do more than eighty. And so what does the eighty look like? The eighty looks like comprehensive transportation. The eighty looks like viable and sustainable wages for employment. The eighty looks like the ability to be able to have food security. And so when we think about philanthropy at Care First, it's not just about getting folks to relationship with doctors, although that is important, and we want folks to have a working relationship with doctors. But we've got to partner and do more with institutions that are in our backyard, that are doing this work, lifting them up through grants, and also through making stronger bets with folks that have the ability to make generational payoff. So we, as our CEO Brian Pinnick is fond of saying, we will try some things. Not everything we try is going to work. But if you think about advancements that we've had, usually it's the bets that, on the face of them and on the surface, initially seem like they're too good to be true and just implausible. You'll never have it happen. So we want to say, we want to index on those, we want to try some of those things that are implausible. I encourage folks, give me a call, reach out. If you're doing good work, I've had a conversation, at least two conversations tonight, with folks who are leading work, particularly around homeless, our homeless youth population and individuals, and some other folks that are doing great work. We want to lock arms and we want to partner with folks who are in community, use our resources to help double your efforts. And we've also started more strategic partnerships with other companies. So if we're in business relationships with other institutions that are in our region, a lot of times our focus area and geography overlaps. So we want to say to folks, you're doing, making investments, we're making investments. Let's try some new things together. Let's try some things on top of our existing portfolio to help improve outcomes in some of these communities. I just want to thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I thank the members of this body, because I know you guys are working tirelessly every day, and just consider us a partner and a friend.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you so much. We will now proceed to adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the journal for the June twenty-sixth, 2023, 1:00 p.m. special meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found beginning on page two of tonight's agenda. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0406, Residential Permit Parking Program, Area 50, Coldstream Homestead, Montebello area. For the purpose of establishing a new statutory residential permit parking area for fifty, area fifty for the Coldstream Homestead, Montebello area. Sponsor is Ramos.
This bill will be assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0407, Zoning Discontinuance or Abandonment of Nonconforming Use Reporting. For the purpose of establishing a process for a person to report to the zoning administrator that a nonconforming use or any part of that use has been discontinued for twelve consecutive months or actually abandoned. Sponsor is Ramos.
The body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This bill is in response to the fact that in my district, we do have several nonconforming uses, which are basically uses that are grandfathered in after the new zoning code was passed. And as they start to not be used, we don't want to use the same standard, which has been in the past, whether or not there's a vacant building notice on it. Not every building is dilapidated enough to have a vacant building notice. So this would allow for additional criteria to be used instead of the VBN to notify that there's been a discontinued nonconforming use. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. This bill will be assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0408, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 1046 Brantley Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1046 Brantley Avenue, Block 0115, Lot 071, as outlined and read on the accompanying plate, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and all street parking requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0409, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three-Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance is 2127 McCullough Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2127 McCullough Street, Block 0310, Lot 013, as outlined and read on the accompanying plate, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0179R, Informational Hearing, Gas Regulator Installation Location. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, and relevant stakeholder groups to brief the City Council on the ongoing installation of gas regulators at residential sites, including a discussion of best practices for the internal or external installation of a gas regulator at a residential property. A discussion of safety considerations with regard to the location of a gas regulator, and a response to recent community concerns related to the relocation of gas regulators at residential properties in Baltimore City. Sponsor Stokes.
The body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, there has been some controversy with the community about BG&E's installation on the internal side and installation about their gas regulators. And there has been some information about where it is installed. We talked about CHAP community. So some of the communities had it installed inside. And then a lot of communities, they were told they couldn't do it. So the idea to have this hearing is find out what is the real understanding of, is it safe inside or is it safe outside? I know BG&E said if it's outside, it's safe. But what about those homes that already had them installed inside? So the ideas for BG&E and CHAP company for this council. So we understand what's going on and what is the actual guidelines in terms of the installation of those gas installators. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. I see the hand raised of Chairman Costello, Councilmember Glover, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Porter, and for the executive secretary, if you could put myself down as a co-sponsor as well. Again, this has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Thank you again for your leadership, Mr. Chair, on this issue. You can find the consent calendar in Section A of the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved in properly. Second, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar is now approved. We will now go to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for the duration of meeting, hearing, and seeing none. We are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. First up, we're going to go to ECD. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President.
Madam Clerk, please read in first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0287, Real Estate Practices, Disclosures, Historic Districts.
Madam VP.
Thank you. Bill number 22-0287. This bill was heard on June thirteenth, 2023. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, vote for the amendment. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion passed. The amendment is adopted. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the bill sponsor also has a floor amendment, so I would like to yield to Councilman Bullock at this time.
Councilman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a floor amendment on my colleague's desk. Very simply, the amendment adds language that the landmarks and potential landmarks that are required for the disclosure. The amendment was discussed in our committee hearing and approved by the committee within, in the concept, but legislative reference requested that we adopt as a floor amendment as required additional drafting. And I move the amendment.
It's motion on floor. It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Amendment is adopted. Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved as amended, and we'll move forward. Do we need to do same-day advancement on this? No.
No, not on that one.
We're not doing same-day advancement on this. Okay, yeah. So move on for, and print it for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0296, Resoning 810, Leadin Hall Street.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 22-0296. This bill was also heard on June thirteenth, 2023. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Amendment is adopted. Madam VP.
And there are also finding of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
Finding of facts moved. It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Founding of facts are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Please note that there's one abstention. Everyone, that's good. All right. Please note that there's one abstention. This will be printed for third reading. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
City Council Bill 22-0323, Zoning, Conditional Use Parking Lot, 3618 and 3620 Elm Avenue.
Madam Clerk, now, Madam VP, now the floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 22-0323. This bill was also, this bill was heard on June twentieth, 2023. I find the finding of facts on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
It's motion on floor. It's been properly second. All's, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Founding of facts are adopted. Madam VP.
And I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Please note one abstention by Councilmember Dorsey. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, please read in the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0346, RPP, Area Forty-Eight, Riverside, Revisions.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0346 was heard, this bill was heard on June thirteenth, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0370, Zoning, Use Regulation, Residential Care Facilities, Age Restricted.
Body would like to recognize Madam Vice President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0370. This bill was heard on June twentieth, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Please note that there is one nay. That is... Change of vote? Okay. That's affirmative by all. We're good? All right, speak into your mic and say that, just for me real quick.
I will also explain my vote if I could.
You can. At this time, you can. Madam Vice President, give him a chance to explain his vote. You can sit down, Madam President.
Thank you. I just was momentarily confused. On Bill 23-0370, sponsor is aware of my principled objection to the idea of conditional by ordinance. And that's, it's nothing to do with the actual land use that I oppose. It is only the principle of conditional by ordinance that I oppose, and so I vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation. So to Madam Executive Secretary Austin, that is one nay. Councilman Dorsey, the rest, yays. This will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0371, Zoning, Conditional Use, Residential Care Facility, Age Restricted, 201 Homeland Avenue, and a portion of Block 5027, Lot 003.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0371. This bill was heard on June twentieth, 2023. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Amendment is adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And the findings of fact are on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
It's motion on finding of facts. It's been properly second. All's in favor, please say aye. I can't hear you. All say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. We have one abstention. Please note, all the rest are affirmative ayes. The abstention is from Councilman Dorsey. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0389, Transit-Oriented Development, Rice's Town Plaza.
Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Bill number 23-0389 was also heard on June twenty-sixth, 2023. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk. I mean, sorry, Madam VP.
I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for the same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. For this, we need a roll call. Please do a roll call. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it. This bill will move for third reading today. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0390, Transit-Oriented Development, Penn Station.
The floor would like to recognize VP. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0390 was heard on June twenty-sixth, 2023. There is a committee amendment on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Amendment is adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam VP.
I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, Dorsey, Conway. Schleifer, Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance. Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it. This bill moves for third reading today. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0404, Transit-Oriented Development, Penn North.
At this time, body would like to recognize Madam VP. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0404. This bill was heard on June twenty-sixth, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam VP.
I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. At this point, we have to do roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, Dorsey, Conway. Schleifer, Middleton. Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you. The ayes have it. This bill will move to third reading today. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0405, Transit-Oriented Development, North Avenue.
Body would like to recognize VP, Chair Committee.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0405 was also heard on June twenty-sixth, 2023. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam VP.
I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. At this time, we have to have a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, Dorsey, Conway. Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance. Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The ayes have it. The bill will move forward today on third reading. Just for the edification of the general public, we just went through four Transit-Oriented Development bills. It's important, the council and city feels like it's important to designate them under the existing regulations. As we know, thousands of new regulations and changes in laws will go into effect as relates to what was passed out of General Assembly come the end of this fiscal year, the beginning of next, is July one. So that's why this body took it up to ensure that we work with the administration to identify these bills and get them passed out of this council before July one. They now will head to the mayor after we complete the third reading of the bill. Just wanted to educate the public on why those bills seem a little different than the other ones that we're working on. Next up, we're going to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, please call the first bill.
EA23-0190, Victor Clark, Member, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District Nine.
Body would like to, body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Stotfield. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held five hearings on Tuesday morning, June twentieth, and we are moving them all favorable, so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill, the confirmation is accepted. We don't have to put that on third reading. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
EA23-0191, Tracy Barber Gillett, Member, Fair Election Fund Commission, District Eleven.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA23-0192, Douglas B. McCouch, Member, Planning Commission, District Four.
Mr. Chair.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been probably moved in second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This recommendation for confirmation is accepted. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA23-0193, Noel W. Newman, Member, Board of Ethics, District Fourteen.
The body would like to recognize, the Chair of the Committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This recommendation for confirmation is accepted. Madam Clerk.
EA23-0194, David A. Rosario, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Five.
The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All's in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted. We will now turn to bills on third reading for final passage that required invoking City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0389, Transit-Oriented Development, Rice's Town Plaza.
Please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0390, Transit-Oriented Development, Penn Station. President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill has been approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill Two Three Dash Zero Four Zero Four, Transit Oriented Development, Penn North. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Two Three Dash Zero Four Zero Five, Transit Oriented Development, North Avenue. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill has been approved. Uh, clearing of the bill status can be found on page eight of the agenda as discussed before. Uh, the last day to ensure, uh, that it was removed off this list was today by five P M. Um, I would like to thank, um, our amazing Executive Secretary, uh, for all of her hard work, uh, ensuring that we put together a comprehensive list, and for those that would like to take bills off, she worked to, to get that done, uh, in a timely fashion. Uh, at this time, we're going to read out all the bills that will be, uh, removed at this point.